Welcome to the Wilmington School Committee meeting of January 9th. I'm officially calling things to order, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is our first meeting of the 2019 year. I've also learned that it's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and this is actually a real holiday, not just a Hallmark holiday. So I wanted to say thank you to all the officers of Wilmington Police Department for all that they do to keep our communities safe, with a special note of thanks to our school resource officers. So, thank you very much. And with that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty, first up is our consent agenda. Not too bad, considering we haven't been here in a month. The first item is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, our regular session of December 12, 2018. Can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Bjork, thank you. A second. Mrs. Bryson, thank you. All those in favor approving those with one abstention. Mrs. Burns? Okay. And then I'm going to group these next warrants. We have G-413, 414, 415, R-220, 221, 222, L-40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, and Food Service 19. And we have a payroll from weekending December 19th and January 2nd. Can I have a motion to approve, Mrs. Burns? Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse with the second. All those in favor? That looks like you're naming us on that. We have a couple of circuit breaker warrants, CB-09, CB-10, CB-11. A motion to approve those, please. Mr. Talbot, thank you. Seconded, Mr. Ragstale, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. We've got two abstentions, Mr. Bjork and Mrs. Burns. And finally, we have some sped warrants, sped 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. Can I have a motion to approve those? Mrs. Bryson, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragstale, and I know I'm going really fast. Sorry. Yeah, that's right. Motion to approve those, please.
I was actually seconded by the...
A second, thank you very much. See, I was going too fast. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. With three abstentions, Mrs. Newhouse, Mrs. Burns, and Mr. Bjork. You do feel a little bit like an auctioneer. Hence the hammer. Alrighty, so that takes care of our consent agenda. The next item up would be our student representative report. Ms. Jordan?
Hi.
Hello.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, next week, we're starting midterms at WHS, and every year, the WHS mentor program, led by Ms. Cassin, runs a cram jam to help freshmen prepare for midterms as it's their first big exam at the high school. Last week, actually, no, yesterday, Wilmington Track had their last dual meet of the season, which was a win for both the boys and the girls. And this past weekend, I think it was Saturday, the Wilmington robotics team competed for their first time at Lexington High School. This was their first qualifying competition, and it gave them the chance to move on to the state competition. However, they didn't qualify, but they did come in third place out of 20 teams, which is very impressive for their first year competing. And it was an incredible opportunity for them, which was made possible by Ms. Kim, Ms. King, and the Amazon team who donated the laptops, and also made possible by the grant that Ms. Kim received. Every student dedicated their time during interdisciplinary block and after school to creating the robots and designing the software, and it really paid off.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your report. As always, we appreciate it. Dr. Brandt, you're up next with your superintendent report, please.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. There are, if you'll bear with me, a number of items of notes to share. Under the, under the report section, you'll note in the packet, there are three items that I'll speak to just momentarily, and then a fourth item to give you a brief update on the FY '20 budget plan as that evolves. The first item, YRBS, or the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and I apologize, I probably should have put the full title there. We can modify that in the posting. The YRBS is conducted every two years to monitor a variety of health indicators and behaviors and risk factors contributing to a variety of social and academic problems amongst adolescents. Information that's gathered through the YRBS is wide-ranging and includes such things as alcohol and drug use, behaviors related to personal safety, nutrition, physical activity, and other factors, really related to overall adolescent health. Wilmington Public Schools, in collaboration with the Middlesex League of Schools, has recently been awarded funding from the Lahey Health Clinic to implement the YRBS across the 12 districts. So this is a great thing for us. Plans are underway, to make the committee and the community aware, to implement the survey in the coming winter months, likely in February, but we'll keep you posted on that. The last time that the district participated in the YRBS was in the spring of 2017. Important to note that the results of the survey, as has been done in the past, and certainly will be no different this time around, will be shared with the Wilmington community. The reference points in the survey will be the other Middlesex League schools. So, again, we'll keep you posted on that, but just wanted to make you aware of that as we move forward. The next item, item 5B, the NIASC Collaborative Conference Visit. As you know, activity is underway here at the high school as it relates to NIASC. That stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission on Public Schools, and the activity is certainly ramping up and taking place here at the high school, and it's an important part of this process, the collaborative conference, that is. Of note, as you'll see in the memo, that conference has been scheduled for April 23rd and April 24th. This is a new step in the accreditation process. The visit that's associated with this step is structured to gather a lot of different information, including information on the current conditions of the school, to review the findings of the self-reflection, that's an important piece that staff as a whole will and have been involved with, identify priority areas for growth and improvement in the school as a whole, to support the school in the development of its goals for growth, specifically as it relates to the school's alignment to the foundational standards, and finally, there will be four visitors as part of the team that will be here in April. So, wanted to make the community aware of that upcoming activity.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Since we haven't been through this process in a little while, I noticed that Wilmington High School has to cover the cost for the visitors' expenses. Do we have an estimate on how much? It looks like there's hotel and a couple meals.
I'm not certain of that information. Do you know by chance?
Just based on my experience with this particular, it's a very small group of people, and I know that they're looking at an inexpensive hotel, like a Holiday Inn type, nothing against Holiday Inn. So, if you figure, and it's only one night, so, say, it's $100 a night for four rooms, and then generally, they'll feed them in-house for breakfast and lunch, and then they go to a restaurant and order dinner, so.
Mrs. Burns?
If you can refresh my memory, if you know, in this process, what's the financial cost for the accreditation and going through this process to begin with, aside from this additional expense? Is there a cost, or is it...
There's certainly different costs along the way. I think, I don't know if the right term would be incidental, but, such as these, but certainly, I don't have that for you tonight, but I can get that and certainly report back if you'd like.
I just didn't know if you...
No, it's certainly a great question.
What that looks like.
The decennial visit will have a larger team, a dozen or so people that will come. I think they're coming in 2020, spring of '21.
So, I mean, that's the other factor here, but certainly to compile it all for the anticipated cost, which I would imagine Ms. Peters would have some sense of to project, but I can report back to you, certainly.
I guess I'd just be interested in what the future expectation looks like, too.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's very, very good question.
Any other questions on the visit?
No, the only other thing I saw is that, you know, obviously, there's some folks that will be involved in the meetings. On the third page, I see listed students, parents, teachers, central office administrators. Of course, that all makes sense to me, but have the parents and teachers and students been chosen? Do you know?
I don't, I'm not certain. I don't think that's transpired yet, given the timeline of this. There are staff, that said, I know there are staff that are working closely with Ms. Peters and her team amongst this, so they're, there's probably from that subset, but more broadly than that, I can also check on that and share that information back with you.
Thank you. Mr. Talbot, I saw your hand up.
Is there a brief description of exactly what this entails, like getting this accreditation, like why we need this, why we're going through this process, for the people out there that don't know?
Yeah, that's also a great question. I know it was raised in terms of the, at an earlier meeting around the importance of this. You know, I'll start the response, and certainly, Dr. Rigdon may want, wish to join in himself in just transitioning from the high school principalship, but certainly, we very much want to be in a position to have an accredited high school. And I think that, from the standpoint of, that accreditation speaks to the post-secondary aspect in terms of what, as I understand it, what schools are looking to and for in terms of graduates, their readiness, the type of program and experiences respectively they've had. So that accreditation process serves certainly to that end. I think it's, it's also a viable way to look inward in terms of what, in this case, what an effective high school should have in place in terms of programs and services. So that process is rich in and of itself, I would say. Would you...
I think you, I think you covered it. I do think it's, it is important to have an, it's nice to have an outside agency to help direct this process, and I'll just add, I think what people experienced this time is very different than what's happened over the past many years, because NIASC has changed its whole process to be more friendly to schools that they know are doing this kind of work anyway. So it allows a school to develop its own set of goals that it wants to make its plan, as opposed to following NIASC's really strict guidelines, which, how it used to be set up. So, I think it's more beneficial for schools to do this work now.
And just maybe one final point, you know, that unlike sometimes other circumstances where there is a third party or an outside entity coming in to look at, in this case, what transpires at the high school, this is a group of practitioners. These are educators that are serving throughout the Commonwealth or beyond, through New England, and so I think that there's that added element that's, that's important, too, to think about that educator coming in to take a look at practices and procedures and such. But I will follow up with a, relative to the questions you had here.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Item 5C is a follow-up to, again, there's a memo in the packet. This is a follow-up that I just wanted to be sure to take the opportunity to share with the committee and the community, to the entry plan report that, as you recall, I presented back in December to you here in full. As part of that report, I commented on, as you recall, a number of areas, but in particular, just take a moment to revisit one specific area regarding the pre-referral process, and that's connected to special education, of course. In the memo that's in the packet, I attempt to try and clarify some comments that, since then, I've come to learn may have been somewhat misrepresented or taken in a way that wasn't with intention. In my original report, I commented on the high number of referrals for special education eligibility, which have often bypassed the legally required pre-referral intervention process, and that's the words that I did use in the report. There's two very important things to note, that I just tried to take the opportunity here to do so. First off, under Massachusetts DSC guidelines, all public school districts in the state are required to have systems in place to support all students, including both those receiving general education and special education services. There are two primary areas that fall into this category or this area. First, such things as the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, or D cap, which I know you've heard some about in the past, identifies a range of possible accommodations that our educators should in fact be putting into place in our classrooms, and as well, supports systems such as, and we have different terms in systems, Response to Intervention, or RTI, as an example, or Multi-Tierred System of Support, or MTSs. Those are two aspects or components that absolutely should be in place according to the Massachusetts Department of Education guidelines, and certainly, those are in place here in the district. Within the report, I'll add, I chose to identify those collective requirements that I just mentioned as legal requirements, and I see them as such, as a part of a pre-referral process. Where and when, and I just want to stress this piece, there has not yet been a formal request to test or evaluate a student for special education eligibility. In addition, with the opportunity, I just want to clarify a point and pointing out that I was not in any way trying to suggest that an individual's right to request the testing of a student to determine special education eligibility be ignored or be delayed as a result of first directing a student to move through this pre-referral process. Our schools must, and most certainly will continue, to respond to formal requests to test students to determine special education eligibility within the appropriate legal requirements and regulations. And so, thank you for that opportunity, just wanted to clarify that. And again, for members of the community who might be interested in that, I included that as part of the memo. Happy to take any questions on that point, should there be any.
Not to digress, but I did have a question with regards to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in its general. This is, will be the third time Wilmington will be partaking in this survey, which I think is a wealth of information to kind of gauge our youth in our community. And I know its previous results have helped drive the initiatives, initiatives, yeah, within the district. Is there any additional way we can, we can, whether it be a form of assessment of these initiatives we have in place, or is there another way we can use this data now that we're building like a historical, like history of our youth in this community to maybe either, I'm not quite sure what I'm trying to get, but either to, I don't want to say create new initiatives, or but, or to kind of...
Validate the existing ones?
Validate, exactly, and maybe kind of perhaps revamping another way of how we can address the needs of our youth, I guess, within this community, whether it be through initiatives or programming or even outside resources. If I'm, I think that's probably the best way I can articulate it at this point, is kind of a general way, now that we've got a couple years of, we'll have a couple years of data behind us.
Obviously, I can't, I can't speak to the efforts or the approach that's been taken in the past, but I would hope that certainly, if it hasn't been, that it's a direction that we can take in the future. You know, we, if we're to embark upon the gathering of that data through the YRBS survey specifically, that clearly has a very close connection to programs and services and our broad commitment to social emotional well-being, not exclusively, but certainly is a cornerstone of that. And so, as that relates to what we talk about with our programs and services, bless you, around, around attending to those things, I think that that's the close tie-in that we should be vigilant about and cognizant of as it relates to whether it be a program that might be offered through health education, as it relates to drug education, or whether it be, just as a, as a, perhaps a simple example. So, I would, I would hope that there's a tie-in in terms of closely looking at that data, tracking it, and how does that align with the programs or services that we're offering in the district.
And being able to expand upon it?
Yeah.
In the future, perhaps?
Yes, so, to the extent that that has, has transpired in the past, of course, I'm not, I'm not certain, but certainly keenly interested in what that looks like. It should, we're going to take students' time to participate in this data, we're going to gather it, we'll report it out publicly, as I think should be done, but it can't just sort of hang there in abeyance until we come back to it two years for the next test.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Ragstale?
In, in part B of the, of the memo for, for this item of the special education referrals, it's, it's pretty clear to me what the misunderstanding was from the way that B is phrased, that it doesn't mean to suggest that the right to request testing is, can be delayed, so that would have been the misunderstanding. Can you clarify in A, I'm not quite sure what the misunderstanding people had that is being corrected? I mean, the, it's perfectly clear to me what is, what we're actually saying here. Can you clarify what the misunderstanding was that we were trying to correct?
Well, I, I think perhaps by the, or to the point that there are, there are systems, I'll call them, that school, the public school districts and schools thus have to have in place as it relates to various structures. I see those as legally required, and, and I also see that as part of a pre-referral, and maybe not legally defined in that sense, but certainly part of the school, the oversight that schools have in terms of when students are starting to struggle and struggle academically. And, and so, I, I associate that with a legal requirement, that as a public school district, we ought to have in place specific systems that, that help guide our response internally to students that are struggling in the absence of any testing requests that's come forward from a parent or guardian or entity. And so, that's how, at least, I see that, and as I would define that. I'm not sure if that muddies that or clarifies that for you.
So then, is, would the misunderstanding be that some people may have taken it as merely an optional steps that we can take, whereas you see it as something that is required, that this is a mandate rather than just an option?
I would, yes, I would say yes to that.
Mrs. Newhouse?
From the questions that I received, it seemed that people took it as understanding that he was saying that we needed to do these steps and not go to specialized testing. So they were afraid, oh, they're not going to test my kids, they're just going to do this stuff, and so they thought it was instead of the specialized testing. And, you know, hopefully, people understand that by implementing, I mean, these are already in the district, but by making these consistent and across the board, that it's going to enhance our systems, and it's only going to help all children and could help the specialized children just as much because they are going to be able to pick up on their deficits that much quicker and see that, yes, we need to push them through to testing sooner. So, hopefully, this is just going to strengthen our district and our systems and be in the benefit for all of our children.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Could I have the remote control?
Absolutely.
If I may, thank you. The final, the fourth and final item again is the FY '20 budget update. It's, there's nothing specifically right now in your packet, but just a couple of, two slides here, I think it amounts to, and just a brief update on where things are at. As you know, the preliminary budget for FY '20, or the 2019-20 school year, was shared with the committee on December 12th. That plan, at that time, represented a 4.6 increase from fiscal year 19, or the current fiscal year. You also recall that that preliminary storyline, a term that I tend to use around, around the budget development, include roughly $500,000 for, in an increase from this fiscal year in out-of-district special education tuitions. Since that time, there have been, I'd say really, at least two key developments that I wanted to just briefly update the committee on and the community as it relates to the budgetary planning. The administrative team has continued to review the numbers and identify any additional or anticipated changes going forward. Some of these are smaller in total value, but nevertheless, they are fluctuations, and it's just a testament or a view in terms of the scrubbing of the numbers, if you will, that Paul and his office and so many others take, take the necessary steps to review. So, some of these are highlighted there as it relates to salaries. But a particular development to share with you at this point in time is the shift in special education tuitions, back to that point, since we last were before you in December. We've identified a downward adjustment of just over $200,000 in out-of-district tuitions at this point in time, and so it's certainly important to note. That's favorable, obviously, on the bottom line. It still, though, however, amounts to tuition increase at the present time, and based upon the information we have before us, of being up over $330,000 from fiscal year 19, again, the year we're in now, to fiscal year 20. So, I just point that out because it is significant. We all know it's significant, but I know that when we talk about our tuitions and in the aggregate, sometimes the essence of that can get lost, and I think of that as, well, it's about the equivalent of five teacher salaries. It's significant, and so it's just an important part of this storyline as we think about going forward. The second development, just to briefly update you on, is the recent conversations that Paul and Brian and I have had with the town manager late last week, who shared with us what he felt that could be accommodated or supported, if you will, in terms of a range of 4.2% from the town side that could be supported for our budget. Certainly thankful of the town manager Hall's support for our operations. With those changes that I just mentioned, though, right now, again, as we sit here before you, and something could change tomorrow morning, but we see the proposal coming in at about a 4.0% increase, specifically driven by the salary adjustments here that you can see, as well as that special education tuition allocation that I mentioned just a moment ago. So, there, these, this slide just reflects very briefly those adjustments, as, again, as it stands right now. Did I miss anything, or would you want to add anything?
We, just for everyone to know, we did meet with the town manager, I think, on December 14th, again, last Friday, and again today, actually. So, very thankful to the town again for, you know, working with us and with the number, and, you know, as Glenn mentioned, I think we're very comfortable with the, you know, 4% increase, and, you know, really thank the town at this point. I mean, we still have other processes to go through, but as a ultimately recommended budget, I think it's...
The slide here, just the last slide, just this is a capital overview, and we, we've tried to also be keenly aware of the stress, if you will, financially that the town faces as it relates to cap, but we've made some modifications that we felt that we can delay, specifically the telephone system project of $50,000 that you, that you see there. So this has been slightly adjusted as well, too. In our, in your next meeting on January 23rd, we'll review all of this in totality. That's the superintendent's recommended budget presentation that has been scheduled, that still remains on the, on the books, if you will, for January 23rd. That's followed then by the budget hearing that's scheduled for February the 13th. So, but again, just a, meant to be a brief update. Work on, is ongoing, I think Paul, again, and obviously his office for the great work that they're doing, and will be before you, and look forward to sharing that information at your next meeting.
Mrs. Burns?
I know you said we'll go into it in more detail at our next meeting. Just out of curiosity, with the telephone system project, when you say delay, are you saying to put off till fiscal year, you know, '21, or, I mean, I know, I don't want to, I don't want to get you down to exact, but I don't know what your initial thoughts are at this time.
I'll start, and then I'll turn over to Paul to talk about, you know, we're in this place right now, as you know, where we're looking to bring aboard a techno, bring back on board a director of technology, and so, you know, there are, there's clarity around some of the, these items of need and necessity, and there's a timeliness for some of them. There are others that there's no question that they have to be done, but also trying to recognize that we are going to have a new director in that role, and to allow him or her the opportunity to see how that might be able to be aligning with other needs in this particular case as it relates to phone systems. Do you want to add?
Yeah, so, working with our IT department, we have kind of, as we scrubbed and got closer, we feel that we're in a good spot with the phone system now. We just did the middle school, so, we're actually removing, we had about three or four years, I believe, of telephone system costs in the budget. This was a, FY '20 was going to be another year, but at this point, we don't think we need additional funds to finish, I think we're in good shape for that project.
And about what was also situated, because I know they were...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Talbot?
Have we shelved a plan to merge with the town on the phone system? I know at one point we had, that was discussed.
That was discussed as part of a meeting with the finance committee and so forth. We were so far down the line and almost completed that there was no opportunity to integrate with the town at this time. But through that meeting, we've created a task force, if you will, where a school and town, IT department, fire department, IT from the town and the schools, myself and so forth, have met a couple times, and we're looking at different areas where we can look for purchasing power. I mean, some of the things that schools buy, we have educational discounts that the town can't enjoy those. However, there's, I think I mentioned at one point, a two-way radio project. There's certain things that we can do and look at to kind of, from a purchasing power perspective, or a, cross-training might not be the right word, but, you know, if the town runs into an issue and we have... runs into an issue and we have, we run into it, we can share information and vice versa and so forth. So we have started that task force. We've met a couple of times and will continue to meet.
Great. Any other questions for Dr. Brand as it relates to the four items presented?
Thank you very much.
Great, all right, moving right along. Under old business, and I think this is me. Can you advance me? Thank you. So at our last meeting on the 12th, we had Mrs. Dorothy Presser in from MASC who gave us a great overview of the superintendent evaluation cycle. I thought it might be helpful if we came back together and talked about that a little bit further because we've only gone through the whole cycle since the revamping of the evaluation process once in the past few years and I know there are a handful of us who haven't been through it at all. So I thought it might be helpful just to take a few moments to talk about it a little bit further. I am so proud of myself, I threw together a few slides. Thought it might be helpful to have a visual. So as you recall, she presented the evaluation process as five steps, right? So step one is the superintendent does some self-assessment. Dr. Brand, you're what, six months in with us, give or take a little bit? So we've kind of breezed through step one. Step two is the analysis, goal setting and plan development. Dr. Brand, right off the bat, at our very first meeting of this school year, presented his goals to us. That was August 21st. On September 12th, you may recall, although it took me a minute, to remember that we actually voted to approve and accept those three goals. And as a refresher, those three goals were his entry plan, which we've talked quite a bit about. Goal number two was the coordinated program review and corrective action plan with updates planned at future meetings. And his third goal was the strategic plan development, which we know is in process. Step three is the implementation of those goals and the collection of evidence. I would say we're kind of in that process now. And step four being the mid-cycle review, which guess what, we have on the books for next meeting, the 23rd. So just heads up. The mid-cycle review is really intended to be an active discussion. We'll kind of check in with Dr. Brand on where he's at with those goals. I think we're all feeling pretty comfortable as of right now of where we're at, but I think it's helpful to discuss those again. And then step five being the end-of-cycle report and summative evaluation. So I kind of went through this pretty quickly, but again, the goal setting, that was a big piece of it. We agreed to those goals and what we're going to evaluate his work towards those goals. And then the other part, which I think we need to have a little bit more discussion on, is step five, which is the end-of-cycle report and summative evaluation. This is the piece that we've only gone through once. It seemed quite overwhelming the first time we did it, but as Mr. Bjork pointed out at our last meeting, it wasn't so bad once we got into it. So the intention is that Dr. Brand will give us a report on his progress, on the goals that we agreed to, and then we as school committee members would write individual evaluations. And in the book that Mrs. Presser shared with us, there is a suggested form. The interesting thing I thought was she pointed out that we don't have to use that form, we can come up with our own. That was the first time I had heard that. My personal opinion was that form was pretty easy and straightforward to use and where some of us already have some familiarity with it, maybe this year we use that form and if we find going forward in the future that there's something else we can do better, maybe talk about it then. But again, this is part of the discussion that we ought to have. And then the end result is we take our seven individual evaluations and put them into one. That's the part that takes a little bit of time, but we handled it. And then that's what we present publicly. So any questions or concerns at this point? Mrs. Burns.
I would just like to say, if it's an option, I know it's the cart before the horse, but that's what I do, is I know, I think in the past, the form that you just spoke of, the evaluation form, was sent to us with the goals as to which we were to evaluate by as a link for us to write up our evaluation and then send back to the subcommittee, which who can, which is, a couple of us could compile it all because that, that is, I think, one of the most taxing pieces besides trying to write up a concrete evaluation. It's compiling all those elements from the seven of us into one cohesive statement that, you know, is true and validates the work done. So that's, I would love to see that occur again if that's an option, because I thought it was just very easy to do off the laptop as well.
Yeah. And I would echo your sentiment that it was easy to have it right there for me. And remember, that is what we're evaluating him on, those are the three points. So you need to be consistent with what we agreed to and make sure that you are making comments that are appropriate to those goals and progress towards those goals. So I did, I agree, I think that was helpful. So I think we have a couple of decisions we can make tonight or at least get out there on our radar. One is, do we want to have a subcommittee to pull these together? I think if I remember correctly, the last time we did it really only was one day that it took us to put those together. And we also should think about timeline a little bit because as we all know, as we move towards the spring, schedules get very complicated, there's other school events that we need to think about, and we've got an election. So then the discussion becomes if we have new school committee members, do they participate in the evaluation process? Do other members participate? How are we going to handle that? Mrs. Burns.
I like how, those times that we have done it, that we did do it a week or two before the election, because I think it's only fair in the, in the assessment piece because those members who have been on for three years should contribute as opposed to a member who can't really contribute because of the lack of involvement, you know? So I would like, you know, the board too, I think it makes perfect logistical sense to try to see if we can get the evaluation done in, in public before the upcoming election, if at all possible.
How are others feeling about that?
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah. Mr. Ragsdale.
Just, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but it, it's also worth thinking about that the earlier you push the evaluation, in some regards, the harder it is to evaluate aspects of the goals that are ongoing. So in particular, the strategic plan, which is something that we're looking to have in place by the end of the school year. If we're looking to evaluate progress on that in early April and trying to have this wrapped up before an April town election, then we have less time on that particular goal to effectively evaluate it. Just the trade-offs.
Yeah, sure.
Just to kind of engage, if, I guess the way I think of it, and you're absolutely right, I see, I see that, that point of view, is that April is just three quarters, by the time we reach April, it's actually less than three quarters towards the end of the school year because it, July 1st, which is over. So if you think about it, think of one, so it's about two months shy per se before the new school year starts and I, and I very much respect that, but I guess I'm trying to balance what occurs in those, granted, a lot of things could, absolutely, as we wrap it up for the school year, but I'm wondering, when you've got eight, 10 months where the information a member could contribute to, I, I'm just trying to balance out what would make the most sense. I, I agree with you, but I'm just, you know, someone who's been on for those eight months with those goal setting and seeing the evidence and being a part of that process and being involved, I guess that would carry more weight in my thoughts. I'm open to other people's opinions as well than someone who might only be able to get the last month and a half.
I mean, I think there's no question that a, that a new member won't be in the same position to be able to evaluate the work as, you know, those of us who have, you know, been on and approved the goals and have been, you know, on the committee throughout the entire year that the evaluation is essentially covering. Completely, completely valid. I just, I think I wanted to just put out, make sure that we're going in open-eyed and knowing, you know, what we gain and what we lose by choosing one timeline over another.
Agreed, I agree, Dave, thank you.
Mrs. Presson, can I ask Dr. Brand if you have a preference as far as timing goes? Or do you think of that April point as being too early or do you think that that would be an acceptable time for us to finish up?
Excuse me, thank you for the question. No, I think it, it's certainly, I think that the point is taken and thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, but, you know, in particular as it relates to, one of the goals that still, absolutely will still be in progress and still be marching forward, the, I do know for what it's worth that other committees approach this issue of when their, the election takes place, that even with new members in place, you know, the engagement of the outgoing member is still able to be a part of the process. So unless something's changed as it relates to, or yes, has been changed with the MASC guidelines that would prohibit that, but I don't think that that would be the case. So, you know, it's, it's the will of the committee. I mean, we, in a similar way, different, but a similar way with educators and part of the educator evaluation process are, are completing evaluations certainly before the end of the school year, there are timeframes within which to work. So I guess the best that I can do certainly is to provide as much evidence as is possible to that point in time and hope that that suffices to demonstrate proficiency.
Any other questions or concerns? You know, I don't think we need to make final decisions this evening, but I definitely wanted to revisit this, put it on our radar and start thinking about what makes sense. Remember, this is a public process, so all of our discussions will be public regarding Dr. Brand and his progress. The other thing that I will make point is we absolutely need to keep in mind open meeting law. As this, this new way of doing things was implemented, I have been watching the news and there have been some communities that didn't intentionally do anything wrong, but through the evaluation process, it was viewed as violation of open meeting to the point where the evaluation was effectively seen by members of their committee before it was presented publicly. So I think just a few lessons to be learned there. Again, nobody did anything with intention, they were trying to do everything the right way, but as far as the law works, I think there's been some lessons learned by other communities, so we just want to make sure that we're doing things the absolute correct way. One simple way to rectify that that I've heard is once the, the final combined evaluation is prepared, whether we choose to use a subcommittee or not, it gets sent perhaps to Tristan, she posts it publicly on our website and then as soon as that meeting is scheduled where we present it, it's already out there publicly. So that's one simple way of rectifying that that I've seen done, but something that we can consider as well. Mrs. Bryson.
I have just one comment, one question. So there is a superintendent evaluation subcommittee that's there and it says that the purpose is to pull all of the individual valves into one, so I just wanted to point that out and I guess think about that for next time if we do want to move forward with that. And my other question is what do you want us to come prepared with for next time?
For next week, next week.
Or two weeks.
Two weeks, thank you. The 23rd, we do have on the planned agenda is for the mid-cycle review. So I think I would ask for a brief overview of where you are at with your goals. Again, these are things we've been talking about, so this shouldn't be too difficult. I think of the first year as kind of the honeymoon year, things go pretty easy and smoothly. It shouldn't be too difficult for us to make some determinations. So I think, you know, start thinking about the goals and the discussions that we have had. We had a really good discussion about your entry plan. You have talked extensively about the strategic plan and the steps that we have taken so far. The coordinated program review, I know we have gotten an update on the review that we received and I know that we will receive future updates as our year continues. So stay tuned for more information. Dr. Brand.
Yes, and just to clarify, so the intention for, on my behalf for next meeting is to pull all that together. I know that all of the activity that you just mentioned, of course, funnels through here, but it's not lost upon me that there's an awful lot of other things that also do. So my intention will be to pull together a brief report that it will be familiar to you, but put it into context, a recap of the things that have taken place over the last number of months and probably to the degree that it seems appropriate to include evidence as well too, just so that it's part of a running tally that builds so that you're not overloaded with everything a little bit more towards the end of the cycle. So that's my intention for the January, the January 23rd meeting. You'll have that in the packet.
Okay. So that will be in our packet, our meeting packet. Please read the packet and prepare any questions that you have because again, this is supposed to be a give and take, this is supposed to be a discussion, not just a presentation. I think we'll all get more out of it that way and certainly the public will also. Okay? Great. That's all I have on the superintendent evaluation unless anybody has any other questions or comments. No? Moving. Sure.
I have one question on that. So we already have a superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
Yep.
Are we going to be in the future partially discussing what specific task that they're going to be designated or is that already essentially kind of considered and understood?
Yeah, I think that's something that we can continue to discuss just because that's the way we've done it in the past and doesn't mean that we have to continue it that way. I'd like to have some more thought if people want to. That's kind of what has worked, but I'm not tied to it personally. So maybe that's something we could, we can put on the docket for next agenda if we feel we need to discuss that further. Okay, cool. All righty. New business, and I think I see listed the fall 2018 athletics wrap-up. I think that's to you, Mr. Alberts. Welcome to our new setup.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Seems like a while ago, but just a chance to come together and talk about the successes that we had as a fall at Wilmington High School. It started way back in the third week of August where we had 160 students and coaches come together for the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge sponsored by the Wilmington Rotary Club. So that's one of my favorite days of the year. We did it at Rotary Field and what's great is the students weren't in session, only one team was, but it's been a nice tradition we've done the last three years where we gather all the teams in and, you know, show awareness towards ALS research and raise funds toward the Angel Fund. So we had 100% attendance from all the fall teams. I think it's a great way to start the school year and extremely proud of the students and the coaches. We had a lot of great team success and individual success. We had 16 different students nominated or received Middle Sex League All-Star Award. We had two coaches receive significant praise. Coach Brian Shell coached the boys and girls cross-country team, was Lowell Sun Coach of the Year, and Coach Sue Hendy, the girls varsity soccer coach, was recipient of the National Coach of Significance Award through the National Soccer Coaches Association. So two fantastic awards that our coaches received this fall. Some highlights I'd like to mention, volleyball, raised funds for their Dig Pink event for Sideout Cancer Foundation. We had over $3,700 that were done, raised by the students. Boys and girls soccer did a combined breast cancer awareness game with Stonemont High School. We've done that the last couple of years. Proceeds go towards metastatic breast cancer research through Hope and Friendship Foundation right here in Wilmington. Football team participated in the ALS Bucket Challenge and raised about $500. And field hockey, donated non-perishable items and that went towards victims of the gas explosion, the Merrimack Valley. So all of our coaches did a fantastic job cheerleading, went through all, throughout the whole summer, they volunteered the Fourth of July National Police Night Out and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And their success kind of followed them on to their playing surfaces, cheerleading qualified for a national tournament again this year and finished fourth in the state throughout the whole, in the fall. And cross-country was Division Four State runner-up for all of Eastern Massachusetts, so the best cross-country season they've had in about 30 years. So the best cross-country season they've had in about 30 years. So those are some of the highlights this, this fall. Questions at all?
I was so happy to hear that the cross-country girls did so well considering we gave them a waiver so they could have a team.
Exactly.
So that was, that was nice to see.
Yep, no.
The other question I had, has the cheerleading national championship happened yet?
Nope, that, they just qualified, so probably in a future meeting, a field trip permission form will be coming through.
Okay, good.
The dates haven't been finalized, I think it's the third week in March is when the tournament is.
Okay. So how does that work? Is our, are cheerleading teams the whole year commitment or are they broken down by seasons?
Yep, so cheerleading, there's a fall team.
Yeah.
And a winter team.
Okay.
So the bid was based on the fall.
Yeah.
The qualifying team. However, the tournament doesn't happen until much later in the springtime.
Okay.
Third week in March. So you really need the girls that are on the team during the winter.
Yeah.
Otherwise you can't practice and get ready for the routine on their own, so.
So what happens if girls from, girls or boys from the fall team decide not to do winter or spring even because of other commitments?
Yep.
What happens?
That's the choice those families made, you know, when the tournament is held in March, you know, we really need a commitment from everyone to practice and get ready for it.
Yeah.
Certainly they were invited to join the team. They chose to go in different directions, but that's the choice that they made, so unfortunately we can't let them join just for one weekend.
Right, yeah.
Four months later, so.
Okay. And do we have any winter sports that required waivers?
Hmm, we had that done earlier.
Okay.
Right now we have girls ice hockey, we have an eighth grade waiver and there are two girls currently on the team.
That are from the eighth grade?
Yep.
Okay, and I, from the tweets, it looks like our girls ice hockey is doing pretty well.
Yeah, they're doing well.
Okay, that's great to see.
And tonight the boys have a game. I'll be heading there shortly, so.
Awesome.
And they're off to a good start, too, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ragsdale?
Just going back to the cheerleading for a second. So in the fall cheerleading, is there kind of a tacit understanding that you're expected to continue in the winter? I mean, it would seem to be that, that I guess it would, I don't say frowned upon necessarily, but there's maybe a little bit of attention if it's going to be separate teams and that, you know, it's not just one season where you signed up for this and you are committed all the way through.
Yeah, no, I mean, certainly, you know, I think the whole team understands qualifying for a bid is a, is an honor in the way the national tournament is set up. It happens later in the year, so, you know, if they're able to do it, that's a great opportunity and expectation for them to be on the team for the whole year, but certainly there are other sports that students want to play that happen in the winter, whether sponsored by Wilmington High School or outside club teams, and that's, that's their choice.
What kind of costs are involved in traveling to the tournament?
You know, that I don't have, but last year it was done pretty reasonably and the students fundraised once approved by the school district, so it was very little out-of-pocket for the families.
Okay, so they're trying to raise funds and then, you know, whatever is left is covered.
Exactly, yeah. The school district did not, the district did not pay for any portion of the trip, yeah.
Okay. And unrelated to that, I, I wanted to just comment that, you know, we talk a lot about sports building character and being one of the benefits from it. I think it's great that we have so many other character-building aspects to the athletic program that so many of our teams and students are involved in these philanthropic and community events, that that's, I think, a great, a great highlight and speaks well to the town and the program.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Mrs. Burns, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I, a quick question. How's the swim team working out?
Swim team's great.
Yeah.
We have 10 total students.
Oh, great.
So the swim team, as you know, is a cooperative team where the guest school and North Reading is the home school. So we have four male participants and six female participants.
Have they been involving competitive meets?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. So I went to their first meet that they had at the Burbank YMCA in Reading and it's been a wonderful experience.
Great.
The two schools are very similar and the two student groups have gotten along really well.
Wonderful.
With pasta dinners and team bonding and they've had success, too.
Awesome. That's awesome to hear. Great, thank you.
You'll get a good highlight on that next time.
Look forward to it.
Great. Thank you very much for your report.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I think next up we are looking forward to hear from Dr. Brand and Mr. Rogiro on the personnel report.
Thank you very much. In item seven B, personnel report, there is a, just a brief update, a snapshot of the, some of the activity related to personnel you'll see and you'll take note, there are three open positions and these all come out as a result of resignations, so we're actively seeking to fill these as, as quickly as we can and some of the other recent activity that's transpired in some of these, in some of these positions. So happy to take any questions if you have any and I'll lean on Paul to help if need be, but.
Any comments or questions? I'm seeing three openings.
Yes.
Okay.
One, I believe, has been filled. One is just a brand-new resignation and one we're working on.
Great. Okay, thank you. Next up is the fiscal year 19 financial report, not to be confused with fiscal year 20, which is next year.
Ask Mr. Rogiro to speak to that.
Thank you. Well, we're down to two fiscal years we're working on now from three, so. Our FY 19 budget was $40 million, 326,000. As of December, at the end of December, we expended and encumbered approximately $39,796,000. So right now we have a balance of a little over $530,000. I'm very comfortable with where we are at this point in time. There is still some work that we need to do. There are a couple of motions that I'll ask that will take care of a few of these negative balances. We do have some grants that were received and we can't charge salary to grants until the grant's approved. So the DESA has approved some grants more in the, you know, the October, November, December timeframe, so some of the salary amounts will be charged to grants as we do every year, just kind of a timing situation. So into some other, some payroll encumbering that we have to unencumber for some leaves and so forth that occurred during the course of the year. Typical things that happen from year to year, but I'm very comfortable with where we stand right now halfway through the, through the school year.
Want to answer questions? No? So I see, actually don't see, unless I hold it away. These classes are doing me no good. I see two recommended motions on the bottom of page three. The first one, allow the Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance to move budgeted funds from the salary adjustment line to the proper line items to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases. Motion. Mrs. Burns, okay, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous, great. And then the second motion, allow the Assistant Superintendent of Administration Finance to distribute the circuit breaker offset to the appropriate special education tuition lines. Mr. Talbot, I saw your hands so moved. Do I have a second? Mr. Ragsdale, thank you. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous to me. Thank you. Does that cover?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, our next item is the SEEM collaborative annual report and audit.
In your packet is both the annual report as, as well as the financial statements. This is for information only. There's no action that's necessary and I have confirmed that with the Executive Director of SEEM. So for information only, it's an extensive report. If you've had a chance to take a look at it, I'll just say on a personal note, this is a, I've had the opportunity to sit in now for a number of meetings with this group, a terrific, seemingly a terrific collaborative, lots of great folks around the table and as I understand from Alice, certainly a lot of good programming that we are able to participate in. So informational only here, I'm happy to try and take any questions that you might have. Obviously I still have a lot of learning to, to go as it relates to the organization, but certainly we'll take any questions should you have any.
No questions? Okay, great. All right, our next item is an agenda item we added, the posting of employment contracts online. Dr. Brand, do you want to give us an introduction to this topic?
Certainly. The, there is a memo in your, in your packet that you will have seen there and it really just tries to put into context why this is here. Recently, Mr. Hall, the town manager, reached out to me in the latter part of December regarding an inquiry that he has received by the Finance Committee Chairman and Finance Committee members about including collective bargaining agreements as well as contracts for individual employees on the town website. Reference there is to the town website, but I think by default we should, we should assume that it's one of the same in terms of the district's website. I did, I did on your behalf contact the school district's attorney, Mr. Waugh, for his opinion on, on the matter. That also took place in late December. It was his view, as you'll note there, that it's customary for districts, he believed, to post collective bargaining agreements, or CBAs. Certainly though, the employee, individual employee contracts might be construed as a different matter, that it's not necessarily an, an activity, if you will, or an action that happens in the same way that the collective bargaining agreements do. Ultimately, though, his counsel is, is that this would be, he believed a decision that you as a governing body, as a committee, would, would take in terms of which contracts, if any, to, to make available publicly, so.
Mrs. Burns?
Sorry, because I've been rudimenting this. I, I don't see any, I don't have any reservations with our collective, if the board wants to consider the collective bargaining units because typically school board members are represented in that negotiating process. I do have to say, I am a bit hesitant with the individual, although if I'm correct in understanding, they're considered public records.
Correct.
But I'm just a little more hesitant because it falls into that personnel. That's not something the school committee is involved in, in negating and that's pretty much superintendent role in, in that. Although, you know, as I said, it's not that they're not available, they're just, you know what I mean? I, I just, a little reserved on, on that area and it's, I just have reservations about whether or not that should be.
Mr. Bjork?
My thoughts on this is we're, we're just establishing policy. We're not talking about any, any contracts that we're, we're personally negotiating, but does this, so if it's policy, if we make this policy and we put up every administrator's contract and there's a change of personnel and we are not right on the ball and changing that online, does that lead to any liability? I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't see the advantage to doing this, quite frankly. I don't see, it is public record, you can make the request, it doesn't necessarily cost us any money because we could, we could deliver that electronically, I would assume. I don't, I, I'm hard-pressed to have a strong opinion either way. I just, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the value in doing it.
I, I'm assuming that this request or suggestion was made to us in the spirit of transparency, which we all get and we're all comfortable with. I'd be curious to learn, is this a suggestion that is being made of the school committee for our CBAs, our superintendent contract, our individual contract? And at the same time, is it also being asked of the municipal side? Because I did check the town's website, I don't see police, fire, or any individual contracts listed on the town's website. It could be that they're buried and I just couldn't find them, but I would hope that it would be equal. So I put that out there. I, I guess I don't really have a strong opinion one way either. I kind of feel as though the collective bargaining agreements are fair game, but I'd like to know how our unions feel about that. They may have a different opinion. At the same time, I think, sorry, Dr. Brand, I think your, your contract is also fair game and we have presented it publicly in the past. Of course, any of those negotiations have been done publicly regarding the superintendent. I'm hesitant on the individual contracts as well. We have a number of those and I, that's, what do we have, probably 25, 30 individual contracts?
Reasonable range, probably.
Somewhere in that range. As an HR recruiter person, it also bothers me a little bit, how will that affect our ability to recruit and hire staff in the future? I, I don't know. These are just things that I have questioned a little bit. Mrs. Burns?
Only because I, I can't remember. Do we, as a part of our budget process, do we list employees with salary, with their salary for the annual budget presentation to the town or how is that? I can't recall exactly how that looks like in a, a budget book.
Yeah, in the budget book you have salary pages and the finance committee has, gets the salary pages.
It's detail-oriented, right?
Yes.
I mean, the other, the aspect is, is, I mean, all this information is, is available upon request.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's not withholding anything at all.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, you know, it's just a matter, I guess, conven, convenience.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I think in, in this area, this is a place where we want to be as transparent as we can within, within some reasons. And I think that the contracts that are of most interest to the general public are ones that should be easily available. And I think that's the collective bargaining agreements and the superintendent's contract. Even though they are public records that can be requested, it is a, you know, it's a barrier, it's an obstacle. To have to make a public records request is, you know, a formal process and then, you know, it takes a long, I'm, I'm actually in the middle of responding to a public records request right now. I can tell you they take time to, to, to properly, to properly do. And so the mere, the fact that they can be obtained, if there are a lot of obstacles in the way, people just aren't going to do it. If I'm someone who is interested in knowing this information, but then I find out, oh, there's someone I need to call or there's a form that I need to write, or write a letter, you know, and do an official records request, I'm probably not going to bother doing that. And, and so I think that that, that should be recognized for at least the information that, you know, Wilmington taxpayers are most likely to want to know about how their money is being spent in the, in the school district.
Mrs. Burns and then Mrs. Newhouse, did you have a question? Are you just thinking?
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Burns?
I also had a question and this may be a little too premature since this is really just the initial conversation. With some of our bargaining units especially, and I don't know if it works in the administration, I don't, in administrative areas, but there are typical side agreements that are comprised. Are those two also needing to be added on to the, the bulk of the contract because it does impact, it does impact roles and possible stipends and other, other aspects? So it's, I'm a detail-oriented kind of person, so, you know what I mean? It's those areas as well, when, if things change pursuant to the needs of our schools, you know, I mean, you don't, you don't want to do the best intent and if someone said, "Well, I didn't see this," you know what I mean? And had I, you know, it's opening up to another caveat of, you know, I mean, there's a lot of intricacies that we work with within our contracts that I don't know if the other, municipality departments have those side agreements or addendums to their contracts and who's responsible for monitoring that it's current and, you know, that responsibility, which I got to say would be taxing, especially if it's all of the municipality and their contracts, because you have people coming and going and that in itself is kind of a, to me, would think to be daunting, you know? It's a whole nother, that I would think if the school department would fall on Mrs. Rafi, which I think she's got a pretty extensive job to begin with, but, I mean, I just want to throw that out as a food for thought for everybody.
Any other comments? How do we feel about this? Mrs. Newhouse?
I, just looking with the general consensuses is that most districts and places have the collective bargains and some have the superintendent, some don't, but, you know, I think the collective bargaining and the superintendents are okay. I do hesitate with the individual contract. the individual contracts. And one, just personally, I would hate, I would definitely want to redact names off of it, because I hate putting names out on the web, because it's out there forever, and God knows what people do with those. But, you know, maybe we need to ask for clarification of why the finance committee wants the individual contracts. And, you know, I get its transparency, but is there more reasons behind it before, you know, we just say yes, or we just say no?
That's reasonable.
I agree, and I think that our role with the superintendent contract, I'm comfortable with that, and the collective bargaining, but the other pieces, I do feel is actually not something that I get to decide on, it's not my role as a school committee member, so feels a little bit uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm.
And it's available, and it's public, and people can ask for it, so it's not as though we're saying you can't see it, it's just not having it all out there on the, on the website.
Right. Okay.
We're not required, we're not, you're not looking for any action tonight, are you?
No, no, this is not seeking any, any action, but if I may suggest-
Please, please.
-I think at a future meeting, that would, would be ideal to provide the clarity, there's not a, there's not a policy that could, that currently exists, that could be a different conversation, perhaps, but, but certainly, it would be, be wonderful if you could, wonderful if, as, as a governing body, you could give that direction. And if there's anything else further that you would like me to do in the, in the meantime, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Talbot?
I agree with what you had said, you know, is every other department doing this, but I wonder what other towns, other school committees, if they've ever had to, because my understanding is that our only job is, is hiring you and keeping you in line, and, so beyond that, everything else, beneath there is, is your world, and, you know, I don't know if I'm very comfortable with personal, like others have said, you know, contracts being out there for whatever reason, you know, if you want to go file for a public, you know, thing, then have at it, that's, you're right, but, you know, just to pull it up online, you know, the amount of information that's in there, so.
To me, though, this feels more like true district policy rather than the operational aspect of the school district, and so I, to me, this, I think this does fall under school committee purview.
So I think I'm hearing that we would like some more clarification from the finance committee about what's, what is initiating this request. I know I've heard transparency, and that's all fine and good, but what else, why? So that's question number one. If perhaps you could follow up with Mr. Dougherty or Mr. Hall-
Sure.
-to ask that question. The other question that I would like answered, is this same suggestion going to be made to our municipal side? The police, the fire, Mr. Hall's contract as our town manager, that I would equate him in a similar role as you, the individual contracts? So I think we'd like those questions answered. I would suggest we check in with our union reps also, as a courtesy. Again, we know it's public record, but I just don't want us to step in it without intending to do so. And then, I, I think we have two options, that we can make a decision as a big group, or this is policy. As, as we've discussed, we do not appear to have an existing policy in place, we do have a policy subcommittee, perhaps it makes sense to ask our policy subcommittee to kick this around a little bit, and put together a draft of a policy that we could then do a first reading here, and then a second, and then a vote.
Now, certainly, that being said, I don't think the subcommittee should meet until we have a further discussion in public with all of us, with the clarifications.
Yep, right, agreed. Okay. Anything else? Did I miss anything in my summary of that? No? Okay. Great, thank you. All right, I think that ends our new business, public comment. I'm sitting there very patiently, nothing to say, just observing?
Just observing.
Just observing is fine, okay.
Well, I have a public comment to offer, and for the record, Julie Broussard, 134 Marion Street. I want to wholeheartedly thank the voters of Wilmington that have supported me over the past two terms. After really careful thought and consideration, I have decided that I am not going to run for reelection for a third term. So I wanted to share that publicly with all of you, at the same time with our administration, with the public as it may be, so everybody's hearing it at once. I do not want my situation to be a distraction from the work that we have, so in the fairness and spirit of transparency, there you go. Thank you. Mr. Talbot?
Tom Talbot, 359 Leibnig Street. I also will not be re-upping my, my role as school committee, I'll be stepping down, so, there's another spot, but.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
I just, I just want to-
Your address, please.
I'm not up for reelection this year. I just want to thank you both for the time and all the, and when I mean time, I think it's an understatement that you've all both have put in to help drive this committee and, in helping to drive it in the direction. We've been through a lot, and we have our war wounds to prove it, and I think we've come out on the, finally come out and seen the sun, and I just, I know words can't express how grateful I am to the both of you for not giving up and sticking with us and keeping us one, one team and, you know, and seeing this district through to brighter days, so I just want to express my appreciation. And thanks.
Here, here.
Thank you. Any subcommittee reports? Mrs. Burns?
I wasn't a part of the last meeting, but I would like to send out as a reminder, because there's only one other meeting, on February, Sunday, February 10th, we are having the dedication of the high school auditorium in the memory of Joanne Benton, and I just want to send it out as a reminder, we're still in the process of expediting all the final touches to it, but it's 2:00 Sunday, February 10th, and we just want to make sure everyone has that in their little calendar, so they don't miss out. It is going to be a wonderful event, I'm very much looking forward to it, and we will be meeting Friday to continue to do our work towards that event, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee? No? Any correspondence?
None tonight.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to, you know, we received a nice little greeting card from Attorney Waugh, wishing us all a happy holiday. Future meeting dates and agenda items, I think we've already alluded to this, but our next meeting is January 23rd, not next week, as I said. Planned agenda items, obviously, the recommended budget, we've already talked about the preliminary, but this is going to be the recommended budget, so be prepared for any questions you might have on that. We are also going to hear from Dr. Brand with an update on progress towards his goals for mid-cycle review, so please put some, put some thought into this, think about questions that you might want to ask, because we really want to have a good discussion there on that. So that is January 23rd, our first meeting in February is February 13th, and that is our budget hearing, and this is a public forum. Remember, I've been harping on this all year, it would be awesome to actually have an audience, that's what it's intended to do. Okay, great. And with that, we have one final motion this evening, and that is the motion to adjourn. Would anyone like to offer that? Mrs. Burns?
So, vote.
And second, Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? That would be unanimous, thank you all.